Company showed up this morning. Good sign of love. They got her.
Oh, great. I'm like, who's supposed to say that? It's on the way now.
What is that?
Is that on you way now?
Yeah. What is?
None useful.
My digital recorder.
Oh, okay.
To record my meeting.
So Sadie, do you have a new?
You had the one side.
For some reason, I got a.
Oh, my God.
That was taking me so long.
I was making.
I was hoping it would take me in here.
We are entitled.
It's like a.
Well, we believe this. Yeah. And I don't know quite. I don't actually read like.
There's been broken. I have the last minute.
I guess.
Thirty six.
Half of the.
I have that shirt. But I have.
I said, did I put down the.
Smooshy.
When we relax for a couple reasons.
I have a real problem.
I was sleeping.
I was watching.
Like if you look at the maps and throw it. Huge maps.
Say, I also have.
Except people play that back.
But we're not. Not special because we're supposed to get there. When I get there, I don't. Unfortunately. If it's, I don't want it to turn to.
Half dollar key, ten cents. We'll have thirty.
She always.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
She'll be a hole. And.
I think.
So, did you have a special training for this?
Mike Jacobson.
Went to a training.
Yeah.
Right.
I think I was. But now I don't even know who to talk to.
I'd actually like to go to another one.
I'm gonna.
I ain't getting close. I mean, I need to.
Go some of these kinds of forums.
I shouldn't have.
Then things.
My lawyer.
Then go again after I've done it.
Plus, I sent a letter.
I know I would. I'm just. I have more clarification or discussion.
Great. Yes. I'm gonna say.
I do have.
Yeah.
Like, for example, we don't have.
I pay for it, officer.
Oh.
After the zoning? Is that through your zoning report? Was it part of your zoning report?
Yeah, that'll be in the court.
I lost.
Wait.
My star moment.
All right, man.
So they don't do.
This is our lawyer summary of it.
That was. Okay. I don't.
Right.
I have less.
Right.
I kind of thought that. But I would love to. I'm. Now.
It's like you're like, that's my reason to ask you that. But you're like, important.
Oh. No, that's.
Nine.
I take more than I need.
Yeah.
So I'm like.
Yeah, but it's like.
I take.
So we're.
Just my.
We're just.
Too bad. I mean, I start out with twenty five. But it's not like.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah.
It's. Let's do a microphone check.
Hello. I'm. Carl, is your microphone working?
Over.
Just remember to speak into them.
Is it up? Maybe set up. Three, four, okay. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is seven oh one, July second, twenty twenty five, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, roll call. Deion absent, Stratton here. Hilton in here. Robo.
Here.
Posler.
Here.
Merchant here. Milnick absent. Okay. Um, do we have anything to adjust for the meeting agenda? Did you want to add the comment? I'm gonna cover, I think I'm gonna cover the under correspondence. Is that okay with you?
About, uh.
Communication.
Communication. Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Anybody have any changes? See that agenda stands, let's, um. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda is written.
Posler, a second.
A second.
Sadie.
Sadie.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The agenda stands. Do we have any declaration of conflict of interest pertinent to our agenda items? No comment.
No.
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 Okay. Public comments. Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the PC. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following rules and procedures. Comments shall be directed to the PC with questions directed to the chair. Any person wishing to address the PC shall speak from the lectern. Please remember to sign in. Kay, do you have a sign in sheet? Okay. Um. Persons may address the PC on matters that are relevant to township planning and zoning issues. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding the time needed to answer a PC member's questions. And public comment shall be limited to three minutes per person. David, would you mind timing? Thank you. Okay. Do I have any public comments? Anyone who would like to speak? Make sure you sign in.
Josh Morgan, sixty one thirty Fifth Road. And I'm gonna have two, two topics here. The first I'm gonna address is the winery ordinance. I just want the boards to understand, not understand. I was a wine maker for sixteen years, so that is my previous life. I am in support of an ordinance to regulate wineries in the, our township. I would ask to kind of do some research and look at other municipalities that have done this as well because there is a lot of stuff from the west coast of Michigan up. I served on the Michigan Wine Collaborative as a board member, so I have a lot of extensive knowledge in this field. I do think it is the perfect opportunity for farmers in our region to utilize crops that are otherwise gonna go unsold with today's market. So I think it's something that we should definitely do as a township, but I think we need to make sure we're not doing a copy paste ordinance from another region because we could put ourselves kind of in a little box that we operate in. And just know that if we haven't acted ordinance, it is very, very difficult for these places to get winery licenses. It's not just the flip the switch and you can run. It's, there's a lot of steps that have to be taken through the state when it comes to getting approval for it. I've helped many wineries start up, so I'm very aware of that process. Um, the second is, as fire chief, I just want you guys to know when it comes to short term rentals, there is some, uh, that I, I would like to be involved in the committee forming like when we talk about it because through our adopted ordinance of the twenty eighteen IFC Fire Code, we technically have the ability to inspect short term rentals as of even right now because they are our ones by the IFC Fire Code that are now operating as businesses, which is a change of occupancy, which then allows me to inspect them as businesses. I'm not doing that, but I just wanted to bring it to the PC's attention that we definitely should be including the fire department in these things because if we're gonna be having a short term rental that has thirty people versus four, that's gonna change what is required of that residence. But I just, my whole thing, I'm not pro, I'm not against, I just want to make sure of life safety, period. Because we have these people in our township that are staying and are coming up here. We just need to make sure that they're safe. The house has smoke protectors, steel alarms, fire safety plan. If there's gonna be more than forty people staying at a house, it's probably gonna have to be suppressed and have a sprinkler system or that, you know, there's rules that need to be followed. And I just wanna make sure that we cover all of that before we keep pushing forward. But that's all I have. Like I said, I'm definitely in support of the, the winery ordinance. I just wanna make sure we, we book enough of things, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Josh.
Yeah. Good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I wanna make just a couple of quick comments. I know you have AIS before you tonight. I don't know where things are heading. I think it was heading towards something like a conditional resign. I really wanna encourage the PC to, um, address this and get it taken care of. I haven't been in supportive of AIS zoning rechanging. I'm very supportive of them being able to use the property with what I think they're looking at a conditional rezoning now. This should not have taken them four months. They did everything they could. And at the board meeting, there was a comment made. Well, why didn't you say that sooner? They offered what's in front of you more than two months ago. There's no reason this should have happened like this. And it's easy to miss how unbelievably expensive that is for business. That shouldn't have happened. On an entirely different note, a lot of you may not be aware of this, but we have Zoom and I was a major proponent of Zoom. To the extent that the first camera that this township had that was mounted right up there, my husband and I bought for the township so that we could have Zoom. We paid for it. We made a donation to the township and said, well, it's not in the budget. Here you go. We need cameras. We need to be able to see the meetings. I understand there are glitches that happen. In the past, we have set up a phone, set up a laptop. Everyone's given a laptop. You should be able to at least get audio hooked up for somebody. Whatever it takes for the township to get everything resolved so that we're not dropping meetings, which looks like it's conveniently arranged so that people can't follow what's going on, it needs to be addressed. And I understand that's not in the PC's purview. It's more the board, but that needs to be addressed because every meeting we have Zoom, every meeting should be on Zoom. Thank you.
Hello, Jerry Tomtec. I live at four O'Week Cedar Street in El Rapids. I'm the owner of a property that's located on Wayneford Road directly east of AIS. I don't have another letter. You've received enough of them. I just wanna express my, my opposition to the requesting. The applicant is currently using the R two in agricultural property for their business, and I don't know why this is still allowed. They admitted to the fact that they were. I don't know why it's not being enforced. Secondly, my property is directly affected and impacted by the zoning, both financially and aesthetically. The master plan adopted in February of two thousand twenty five, not more than five, six months ago, designed to show the property being zoned for industrial. And lastly, if it is approved for a conditional rezoning, I'm gonna request a buffer of my west side property for rezone, just to protect my interests. I've been affected by this financially, as mentioned. And I do wanna point out too that the vacant property that's been used for pipe storage, not I, AIS, but by whoever is the owner of that property. My understanding is it doesn't have a rezoning signed to it. It doesn't have a variance. It's been not used the last couple of years. So in my opinion, it's nonconforming, and I'd like to file a formal request to have that brought back in good form. Thank you for your time. You'll wanna look at section eighteen point oh three and eighteen point oh six of our Kuwaiten Act for no use instructions. Thank you.
Chair. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Davis and I live on Chris Road. And I don't know what the AIS is, is, is going to speak about tonight other than what was passed down from the township board about getting the lawyers together and coming up with some agreement to the form. If I'm speaking to something that's not true, but what I heard was that maybe the township couldn't ask the, the AIS supplier, but the lawyer from the AIS has to ask the township. And what I heard was that there may be an agreement that if they leave the property, it goes back to the original zone. That's what I've heard so far. And what happens if they don't leave the property, but if they sell the property? Is that, let's say they decide to sell. Is that right? Is that gonna ride with the agreement? And it also seems kind of weird that really having a lawyer type of agreement is really just saying it shouldn't be rezoned. That if they leave, it's gonna go right back to where it was. It's like, it's kinda, even though they may not leave, great, I understand that, but it just seems kind of weird that it would go back right away. It's like, it's almost like the township really doesn't want to rezon it, but they wanna have AIS here. I can understand that. But I hope it's made very clear of what's going on. Thank you. Well, also, was, was the fire chief discussion in front of the planning commission or just the township board the other day in regards to maybe hiring somebody?
Just the board.
That's.
That was the board.
So that's the, if I wanted to speak about that, I need to come to that meeting. Thank you very much.
Sign in, please. Anyone else?
That's my homework room tonight, just so you know. I didn't even get through your whole agenda, and this is just the homework for like three things. So I'm gonna speak on three things, maybe four. Your calendar outside has been changed. You changed your meeting last meeting, but you didn't do it with a resolution. You set your schedule with a resolution. If you change it, you need a resolution. Please, please. The MTA, well, it's just an opinion, but if you go to your green book and you go to page fifty six and, I think it's fifty seven, let me look. Fifty six and fifty seven, and you read the OMA, you'll get where I'm coming from. These books are very important. If you look at my books, they're falling apart. That tells you how many times I've read them in the seven years I've known they've existed. I also celebrated my ten year anniversary of living here and attending all these meetings. I've probably sat through more PC meetings in my entire life than some of you who've even been alive. So please read these books because what if you have a Catholic interest and you need to read the Catholic interest so you understand it because you have been giving this, you have been given some misinformation? So please, these books are your friends. Also, you might wanna read this one here. As far as Zoom goes tonight, the people and the taxpayers paid for Zoom. I don't understand why nobody can get into work. I'm the dumbest person in the room in IT and I figured it out. Did it take me a long time? Absolutely. Seven hours watching Youtubes. Six, seven different discussions with resources. You have a lot of resources. If the taxpayers paid for this, there's a warranty. There's some training. Please, somebody take it. I would like you to put the Zoom discussion on your next agenda. I will also send you my homework. This is my homework just on Zoom and two way communication. I'm sorry, but somebody's misinformed you. If you didn't want the public to speak, you needed to buy a streaming program. But this commission has never followed what the board or anybody else has told them to do. They have listened to the people who they work for, and you work for the greater good. And remember, not only do you work for the taxpayers and the people that vote, but you also work for the people that can't vote but pay higher taxes. So please, let's get it right because there's nine or ten people right now on the outside that wanted to look in and they can't. So they're not real happy right now. If you'd like to look at the blow up on my phone. Have a nice night. I'm gonna go get an ice cream.
I do need to. I don't know. Anyone else?
Oh, can I say one more thing?
About something other than AIS?
Yes, correct.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, there's again. It has to do, and I get a hold of a bit on this. I'm going through the, the webpage for the township. And at the top, it talks about, you know, the township agendas, the township such and such and all that. It comes down to planning. And I kept looking. I'm not really good at this. I was looking for the planning agenda. And so she said, you have to go to planning to get it. It'd be nice to add the word agenda on that to know because the township's got agenda on it. The planning commission ought to have an agenda so it's on the same page here. So it's really easy for people that don't know anything about computers like me to see planning agenda and then push on. Because I kept pushing on all the agenda buttons because that, that's where all the agendas were. That's all I got. Thank you.
Think your field at the top. You can put it in at the top. There's a search field at the top where you can begin planning commission agenda or agenda packet.
I'm just looking at this one right here. You know what I'm saying? That pops up right away.
And the calendar doesn't link through either.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close, close the public comment?
You don't need one.
I don't need one. Okay, then we will move on. We have no public hearings tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous regular meeting. I don't have any issues. Any amendments?
No.
No. I have a motion to accept the, um, the meeting minutes from the June fourth meeting as.
Presented.
Presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Call of paper?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, the next item is correspondence. You all have a copy of the letter that we received from Rachel Steelman. And I would like to talk about correspondence management. We all received an email from Wendy, the township clerk, about how correspondence is handled. So I'm just gonna briefly go over that and then add some more information to that. So all, all correspondence about township business becomes part of the public record. Comments may be shared with the appropriate board or commission, but not all will appear, appear in the meeting packets. Meeting packets include documents directly related to agenda items. Due to high volumes, not all emails or letters can be included. Meeting, during the meeting minutes, only comments made during the meeting spoken aloud are included in the official minutes. Emails or letters are not automatically added unless discussed at the meeting. All correspondence is available upon request under the Freedom of Information Act. And Wendy has a notebook that gets all of the correspondence that we've received. So this week, I was contacted by a PC member who had been a concerned citizen, had reached out to them, and we were discussing, how do you handle that? And so I spoke with Wendy about it. And if you are, this is super important for all of, all of us. If you're contacted by an concerned citizen, please respond in the following manner. I am forwarding your message to the township clerk. Um, please do not engage in conversation. You may also suggest that the sender attend and speak during the public comment portion of the PC or township board meeting. Okay? And if you receive an email, you would just forward it on to Wendy. If you receive a text, you would take a screenshot of the text and you would email that to Wendy. Okay? Everybody clear on that? If it's a telephone call, please do not engage because you won't have a record of the conversation and just let them know that they can, they can send a message directly to the township clerk or they can attend a meeting and speak publicly, publicly there. Okay? Any questions about that?
Yeah, I could, I could make a, a comment. I received a phone call from a citizen who's actually on the, actually also on the ZDA. He was concerned about the property next to him that is fine country. It's twenty seven acres. It's currently, there's two houses being built on it. And he was asking me questions and I, I referred him to Deb. I said, you have to talk to our zoning administrator. And then I called her and, because she knows this individual too. And I said, I, I can't answer those questions. It's not my place, number one, and I don't know the answers. And I wouldn't have told him if I did. It was the contractor because then I would have been speaking, you know, in November. And it's, I think, so, and I understand they have talked.
Great. And also, Mr. Tomcik, if you want to file a complaint, you would do that through Deb.
Right, there's actually forms in the back of the, in the hallway. Complaint form.
Thank you.
The next item, we have reports from the zoning administrator.
I didn't realize we couldn't get to work tonight. Sorry about that. I don't have any training out of the store. My zoning report is in your packet. There were nine new land use permits issued last month. I think I just issued number forty nine today. So it's, um, it's, it's creeping up against fifty and early, in early July. Have gotten a few more complaints. I did serve a misdemeanor citation today on a short term rental that's gonna be proceeding in court. So I know that civil infractions are gonna be a topic at an upcoming board meeting and the, the fact that people would prefer to have a civil, have a misdemeanor on their record versus a, a fine from a civil infraction surprises me. But, but I put in my report, what a, the zoning district regulations. So if someone should ever ask you what you can and cannot do on your property is in Article Four. And basically, every building structure, record, every use of any lot, okay? Every use, short term rental included, every use of any lot, building, structure, is regulated. So if anyone ever asks you, oh, where does it state that? Start with Article Four of the zoning ordinance. And then it also goes into uses permitted by right and what a special land use permit is. And most of you guys have been through the special land use permit procedure, so you kind of know that. We did have a, one special land use last month and we had three amendments come through. Coming up next month, we are, the end of this month, we did, will have ZDA appeals coming up on July twenty fourth. An air I found with the prior zoning administrator who created two nonconforming properties. And at the August meeting for the planning commission, there will be two hearings that are going to be scheduled in the next week. One will be on the Rachel Steelman amendment that was submitted that for whatever reason, the board nor the PC wanted to get that scheduled. So I'm getting it scheduled just so we make sure we have a hearing because if zoning ordinances in Article twenty one state if someone amends their ordinance, we need to have a hearing. we need to have a hearing. What you choose to do with that information, turn it over to ROS, make a decision, or what you want to recommend to the board is up to the Planning Commission. But that will be, it will be a hearing August 6th. And also, if you look at Article 21, under amendments, it states that there's a fee of $300. But the fee on the planning and zoning fee schedule says $750, so there's discrepancy there. So we'll have a hearing on that amendment as well to get that corrected. In the zoning ordinance, so it states to refer to the township planning and zoning fee schedule.
Is it the second hearing in August? Okay.
Those are the two that you'll hear in August. Okay?
Any questions for Deb?
Great, thanks.
I, let's see. Keith is away. Randy is also away, so we want to have a chair or township board representative report. Carl, do you have a ZDA report?
Yes. I do. If I can find it there. It's a letter. Ah, there it is. I got a letter from Wendy, and it is from our attorneys regarding the Bags Road lawsuit, which was appealed. The original lawsuit was denied. They were ruled in favor of the zoning board. The key items on that, on the decision of the three-george panel. The three-george panel was, the township board was correct in allowing the variance to go to the ZDA. The ZDA applied correct standards from the land use division ordinance. The township ZDA procedurally complied and can grant the variance later in time, that is, after initial land. So we did everything right. But the court finds that the fact that regarding the property creation, ownership, et cetera, that they reviewed all that. Essentially, what they said, which is, the reason's right in here. The ZDA made the decision was correct, but they were not convinced that our argument was complete and thorough justifying the decision and referred it back to us to explain in greater detail or maybe reconsider it. I don't understand which, essentially, they referred it back to the ZDA. And it was this procedural that our, the written, what they said was, the written information sent to the court was not convincing. But I don't know who wrote that. We didn't. Was that our lawyers? I mean, that's, this is the second phase. You know, I was just a member. I wasn't the chairman. But I know at the end of our meeting, our lawyer was there and asked us a couple of questions about our answers. I guess from my point of view at that point, maybe they were going to write the report. I don't know. So I don't know what they're supposed to do with this yet.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I comment?
No, absolutely.
At this point, everything is on hold, and the attorneys will be guiding us once 35 days has progressed. But the findings of fact that were completed by the zoning board of appeals were insufficient. So yes, you did make that decision. And what you or we decided was what was insufficient. So that's where it stands. There's really not a lot of discussion. It's just, it is where it is, and our attorneys will be guiding us on what the next steps will be, probably either this week or next. Okay? Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. What did I miss?
Committee reports.
We don't have any committee reports.
It was on the agenda, so I have to have something else.
Any additional items?
I just, since I don't think I'm on here anywhere, chief of the... I did speak to the engineering firm that we have as a consultant about the road ordinance. And the road, I'm sorry, the road ordinance, which they said probably would be simple to do and take a lot of effort, which, you know, nothing, everything takes effort. But she said she could help us at two stages. One is when we're thinking about how to write a road ordinance, or after we decide kind of what we want, and then she'll look at it. She'll come to a meeting and help us, maybe steer us in another direction or add something to it. So it's up to us to decide where in the process you want her to participate. It's, you know, I think, personally, I think we need to come up with something.
Right.
Because there are a few copies floating around of various private road ordinances.
I'm just wondering if that's something that Kippels and Webster can help us with as well?
No. They might, but...
At least a starting point?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, you know, we have so much to do. Which, where do we start, kind of? Yeah, that's, I'm just bringing it up for maybe a later discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Unfinished business, we have the, it's listed here as a letter from AIS, but...
Are there no additional items, or you want the additional items?
Denise, there are additional items.
Maybe we've got it, thank you.
So this document is labeled "conditional rezoning agreement", and it was provided to us by the attorneys representing AIS's address.
Yes, after they discussed it with your attorney.
Right.
Who approved the language, actually, he modified the language, which we were in agreement to.
Okay. So as we've stated at the past public hearing for this property, the Planning Commission cannot add conditions to zoning change. But the property owner can, of their own volition, create conditions. And that's what we're looking at here. So if you haven't had a chance, have you had a chance to read it? Okay. I highlighted a few things. So whereas under, and it's legal, legalese for sure, whereas under and pursuant to Section 405 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act 2008 PA 110 as amended, certain conditions voluntarily offered by the owner of the land, including an agreement between the township and the developer, may become a condition of rezoning the property. So that's what we're looking at. And the conditions are... Let's see here. "Conditional rezoning consistent with MCL 125.3405. The property has been conditionally rezoned as follows." And this, again, this is coming from the property owner. This is not a condition that the Planning Commission or the board has created. Parcel 13-004-015-21 has been conditionally rezoned to industrial district N1, except that southern portion of this parcel, zone A1, remains zoned agricultural within 295 feet of Crisp Road and parallel thereto. So that bottom 295 feet of that parcel will remain agricultural, which is A1. The southern portion of this parcel, zone residential district R2, remains zoned R2 within 600 feet of Crisp Road and parallel thereto. So the southern portion of that, of that property, the southern 600 feet will remain R2. Parcel 13-004-010-10 has been conditionally rezoned such that it is zoned industrial district N1 in its entirety. This rezoning is approved on the condition that the property shall be used solely as a construction, forestry, or agricultural equipment dealership and training facility, which inherently includes the outdoor storage of motor vehicles and their accessories to be sold and/or used as part of the dealership business, plus parking for customers, students, and staff as an accessory use. Any questions about that from the PC?
I think it should also be brought out that in the recitals, it does say somebody had asked about what happens if they don't have the property or are no longer there or sell it. It says, "Conditional rezoning agreement shall run with the land and be binding upon and inure to the benefit of the township property and developer, including their respective heirs, successors, assigns, and transferees." So anybody who takes this property, should AIS ever leave, they're bound by this agreement.
Right, it runs with the land.
Yep.
So, and then also, if notwithstanding anything to the contrary stated in this agreement, the developer shall have the right at any time to voluntarily terminate this agreement by delivering written notice thereof to the township. Upon such termination, the property shall automatically revert to its former zoning classification. If any of the conditions specified in this agreement are not met, the property will revert to its prior zoning classification and any uses on the property not in conformance with the zoning ordinance for the classification must cease.
Would you be kind enough to show me on this drawing here where the 600 feet is on this approximately? And then...
We went through that, I think, when you guys approved it. But we can go through again.
Just for myself, because I have two different...
It's twice as far as the one that's 295.
So this part here, this is the R2 right here?
It is, let's see, what are we looking at? That's the R2, yeah. So it would go up, if this was 295, you're basically doubling it.
Yeah.
You know, you're going up to here.
Okay. And so the other part of the R2 would be industrial. And then this one would stay down here?
Yes. Yeah, but this is what was changed before. That last one where you approved it, we moved that from 295 to 600 feet.
And that's basically, it's in your condition here?
That's what's in the conditions.
So the question, the question is whether we are comfortable with the agreement, in which case, if we are, we would forward this, we would take a vote and forward it on to the township board. And we would recommend it to the township board for approval.
So to be clear, if they move, AIS moves, then the property would revert back to the old zoning districts?
If they no longer own the property.
Well, they don't own the property. I think they're leasing it.
Well, it's Baronwald Realty who's asking for this. They own AIS. They own AIS. They own the property.
Oh, okay.
And yes, what that says is, number one, the condition we put on it is it can only be used for a forestry, agriculture, or construction equipment dealership and training facility. And that would apply to that property forever. That's the only thing it can be used for. Which is to address the concerns of all these other industrial uses that this township allows that are things that might not be wanted. One of the many things we've addressed.
So these conditions, this conditional rezoning agreement has been freely, voluntarily, and knowledgeably offered by the owners and agreed upon in its entirety. And then, David, where's, which portion talks about?
It's on page 17 of your numbered pages. I think it's the third page, second page in.
One, and which?
It's in the recitals.
So it's, at the top of page 17, there are four paragraphs that begin with the word "whereas", and I believe it's in the fourth paragraph. "The developer agrees to abide by the terms and conditions of the township zoning ordinance", and we would fill in the ordinance's number, "including the acknowledgment and understanding that the terms and conditions of the conditional rezoning agreement shall run with the land and be binding upon and inure to the benefit of the township property and the developer, including their respective heirs, successors, assigns, and transferees." Where does it specifically say that if they, if...
Well, let's be clear, that your attorney, your attorney talked to our attorney, made some modifications, and agreed this is what the township would, the way they would want it worded.
I'm not questioning that. I want to make sure that works as a commission.
Yes. I'm not an attorney. I didn't write this. When you read that last sentence, it's saying that "the conditions of this agreement shall run with the land and be binding upon and inure to the benefit of the township property and the developer, including their respective heirs, successors, assigns, and transferees." So anybody who would get the property after them, if they ever decided to sell it or transfer it or whatever, give it away, this goes with the land.
Right. So it doesn't, the conditional zoning does not disappear upon sale of the property?
That is correct. This goes with the sale of the property.
Right.
It's locked in to this conditional zoning.
That's what I wanted to make clear, because somebody asked if it ended with the sale of the property. So I wanted to make sure it was clear.
And if for some reason they didn't want to be in this business, and they didn't sell it to somebody that wanted to be in this business, it's stated in here, it reverts back to the original zoning.
Right. Denise, do you have more questions?
No.
Carl, any questions?
No.
Sadie? No, David?
No.
Okay, so how would you like to proceed? We would need a motion, actually...
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Tim, you can do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommends to the township board the approval of the conditional rezoning agreements submitted by Baronwald Realty to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'd like to, because we want to include the findings of fact. So if you want to take a look at that and see if you're comfortable. That's something that Randy put together, based on communication with the attorney.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to read this for everybody, or...
I'd be making the motion then, is it okay?
Sure.
Then I need this withdrawn, because it's already been made.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Carl? Withdraw your second. Okay. So the motion is, "We recommend that the proposed conditional zoning agreement between Whitewater Township and Baronwald Realty, which rezones the indicated property to N1 Industrial with voluntary, with voluntary conditions, excuse me, described in this agreement, be approved by the township board. This recommendation is supported by the following findings. Number one, the proposed rezoning consistent with the 2025 master plan. Specifically, the planning strategy for this area includes three points to review the uses permitted and development standards to review the boundaries of the end district and its... to review the boundaries of the N district and its附近. Expresses the policy of discouraging truck access to Crisp Road, which is unpaved. Number two, to reduce potential impacts on neighboring property, the applicant has amended the rezoning application to limit the expansion of the industrial zoning district such that the agriculturally zoned A1 area remains unchanged to a point that is 295 feet north of Crisp Road and parallel thereto. And the residentially zoned R2 area remains unchanged to a point that is 600 feet north of Crisp Road and parallel thereto. Further, the applicant has also voluntarily offered a conditional zoning agreement in writing, limiting future land use activity. Number three, the planning commission will soon be undertaking a review of permitted uses and development standards and zoning district boundaries in the N1 district as part of work about to begin with its planning consultant. Number four, encouraging economic opportunities and preserving rural character are two planning principles in the master plan. The proposed rezoning results in community investment that helps anchor a major local employer in Whitewater Township with additional facilities and by providing new training/educational opportunities. Further, residents have indicated that heavy equipment use and repair are greatly linked to various local agricultural operations. Number five, the applicant has demonstrated a willingness to install firms and to take other measures to reduce noise and light spill over when a site plan is provided. Number six, the planning commission has reviewed this proposed zoning amendments in the context of section 21.05 of the zoning ordinance. This section points to the need to consider factors such as master plan consistency, zoning ordinance intent and purpose, road system safety and efficiency, utilities, changing conditions, potential exclusionary issues, and site conditions. That is the end of the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second here.
Roll call vote?
Milneick, absent, Merchant?
Yes.
Posler?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Elton?
Yes.
Threaten?
Yes.
DeYoung, absent.
The motion passes, so the voluntary conditional rezoning agreement will now move to the township board.
Thank you.
For the review. Okay. I have a second.
Could I just copy that before we move tonight? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the wineries and tasting rooms ordinance review. And Sadie has included her revised ordinance. And I also included, so it shows up twice in the packet. The second time is with Randy's comments.
I can't see the... What pages were the?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one starts where Randy looked at.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Did?
Where's the Sadie's then?
So twenty-one, twenty-one through twenty-three is Sadie's. And then twenty-four through twenty-seven, I believe, twenty-eight. Twenty-four through twenty-eight includes Randy's comments.
Twenty-one has comments too?
They both have comments. If you go to twenty, if you start on twenty-one, you can see his comments.
Yeah.
The other ones, you can't see them. Did you guys get the email of all the links and other information that you guys requested from the last meeting?
That's what I, Deb, is that what you just sent us?
I just got it from, is that what you sent me, Sadie, at twenty minutes to six?
No, I sent, no.
No, that's, yeah.
I sent one to Keith a long time ago to send everybody.
I never got that. I don't think.
There's a bunch in the packet about stuff, but...
Well, what you, what you sent on is a zip file, and?
That's what she sent me tonight.
Okay, so?
That was for a future meeting, that's not for tonight's meeting.
Okay, all right, my mistake.
At least that's what she just clarified for me.
Why did?
Because I copied you on what I sent to him tonight, and I sent it.
Why did that just go through tonight, Deb?
I don't know.
I turned, that's weird. I sent that like three days after our last meeting.
Cool.
Twenty. I can't find the twenty-one on this thing.
Top right corner.
There you.
Don't.
Oh, no, that's, so that's, that's her, that's the number, the page number on her letter. Page, here's the page number, fifteen, so upper right corner.
Is it in this file?
The zip file?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you open that.
Yep.
I'm not, I have no idea why that just sent at 5:30 tonight.
I just got, well, I just got it tonight.
Because that is so strange. Because Keith got it, because he responded to it. But then it just sent to all of you guys just tonight, or to you tonight.
Oh, you're not looking, you're not looking at the most recent version? Is this, did you, is this what you downloaded?
Deb? I didn't get anything from Sadie.
Okay, go to Whitewater Township.
Did you get the one from Deb?
I did just get it, she was just asking if she was...
I don't know, I didn't, I sent it to Keith and Deb to send to you guys.
Okay.
A long time ago. I don't know why I came back.
Yeah, I just go to the whitewater township website.
And I don't know why Keith didn't send it to all of you guys.
Well, that's what. It says revised July.
The one in the Whitewater Township website is the current packet.
And I'm not even sure that I can, well, let me see if I can get that. This is, these are supposed to be available to members as a packet printed.
Okay.
And I am not getting those, and I have a hell of a time trying to use this damn computer to follow things when I can't find them. I sit here and I look stupid, and every year I've been on here, we have always had a hard copy, me, Mike Jacobson, Al Baugh, and others, before we had computers, and since this new regime came in, I'm getting nothing from them. It was Lois McLean was our recording secretary, and she was the contact. When I came out online, she told us our packet was right there, always. Now I have no idea what we're doing.
Do you want to print it?
Do you want, girl, would like a hard copy?
Okay.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, let me, let me look at my mail. Should I, let me. You sent it, you sent it at the last minute, and we're supposed to look at it?
No, that was a mistake. So it's on, it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
The one that's on the agenda with Keith's comments.
With Randy's comments?
Or with Randy's comments, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that, but I can't, no, I can't find it.
Can you go to the?
Let me see. I go back, sir. Can you go back to your, your outlook, if you go back to the?
This is my mail.
Oh, I wish the township did, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, what do you use? Do you use?
I think that's over here in the corner, I'm not sure.
Can I look at your zone code for that? Deb, did you put the agenda on your, in the outlook packet, on an outlook message, the email?
If you go to the township website, you can get the most correct.
Renee sent it out in Outlook.
I did.
Renee sent it?
I can go to the township.
She re-nosed everything out there too. Let's do the outlook. Where's your outlook?
I usually go into Microsoft and then up to the township website there.
Okay. Then I have to let you do it, because she's cute.
Sadie, was your original, that we want to talk about, is that in one of the meeting packets, or has it been changed since then?
The very first one?
Well, what we're talking about in reference to this one.
That's the one, that's the one.
Okay.
That's the, that's the latest one.
Okay.
And that's the same thing that was sent in that zip file.
Okay.
The zip file just had other references to like MLCC website and different questions you guys have had. And put it all in a zip, so it says like more references in that zip file. And I sent that back to Keith when I sent him this. I don't know why it just sent to Deb tonight. I don't know why. I don't understand, I go to my site mail. I don't understand that it doesn't make any sense to me.
I suggested that we get a drive out there that would maximize it.
Township computer file.
Yeah, but it's.
Yeah. It would be like. I'm going to talk to Monday about it again.
Having digital, all the correspondence digitally uploaded is the only way to be fair to everybody. I mean, it's work, but a lot of times they all show me online.
Here it is. That's Randy right here, having like, and I don't know. Do you want me to print that section of it for you, Carl?
Here, he can have mine, I've got a hard copy of that.
It starts on page twenty-one.
Yeah, I just.
Okay, so Denise, you'll take care of making sure there's a hard copy here for Carl?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else need a hard copy on the commission?
Yeah, this was on the computer the other day, I read all this.
No, I can't print it.
Okay, all right, well, you've got it. So, okay, so. I had a couple of things to add to Randy's comments. I wasn't sure in, okay, so we're going to take wineries and cideries and include them both in definitions, right? Okay, yeah. And at that point, you can state that, that further references to wineries in this section shall include cideries.
Yeah, we'll make it so it's in both, so it's in both places.
Okay, yeah. And then in A1. B, Randy asks that you strike above ground portion and change that to the floor area of each building shall not be greater than 20,000 square feet.
Where, I'm in Boston.
I'm on, I'm in Article Five supplemental developmental.
Oh, you're right, due to, I'm sorry.
I'm on page twenty-four.
So you did page twenty-one.
Well, okay, so page twenty-one and page twenty-four are the same.
Okay.
So we're striking wineries and cideries are welcome by Whitewater Township as appropriate farm activities. And the second sentence, all further references to wineries in this section shall include cideries, that's going to get shifted up into the definitions.
So just some changing wording there with the welcoming.
So I'm looking at 5.13.
So you're saying wineries and cideries are appropriate farm activities?
No, we're striking that, because we don't, we don't make that comment about any other uses in the zoning ordinance, so.
I think it was welcoming, right?
It's welcoming, yeah, and he said it would suggest that we reference the master plan language about ever tourism instead, so.
And then the second sentence in that same paragraph, all further references to wineries in this section shall include cideries will be included in the definitions.
So if we have any comments after Randy, we'll go through Randy's comments first, and then we'll go through ours?
Sure.
So we're saying wineries and cideries are welcome by the Whitewater Township as appropriate ever tourism activities, is that what we're saying? Is that what we're wanting?
My notes, in my notes, I thought he was striking it altogether.
I do not think he's saying that wineries are welcomed.
I would suggest that we reference the master.
Yeah, if you read his comments, he was saying we don't say that for any other.
Right.
Land use, and that's why it should not be in there.
Okay, so let's, I just want to make sure.
I think you can just strike, strike that sentence.
Strike it right out.
And then the second sentence will go into, become part of the definitions. So it would be ciderie or winery. And then you can state there that you're, that all further references to wineries in this section shall include cideries.
So, yeah, that's a good talking about.
I have a second, my first one.
Oh, here, okay. So under definitions, should you put ciderie as a standalone so that people that are looking for ciderie, they're not, they're going?
But they're not a standalone license.
No.
They coincide, so you don't, wine and cider through MLCC are the same.
Yes.
It's the same license, so that's why if you look at most ordinance out there, they're together, because you can't have one license without the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I'm just wondering if somebody would say, oh, I want to start a ciderie, and they just have winery in definition, if they would, you know, if you said ciderie, see winery, something like that.
Yes.
So that people don't, it does, it's not intuitive to me, but that's just.
If we put all further references to wineries in this section shall include cideries, that will go under winery definition?
Right, but, but.
Do you want a ciderie definition placed first?
No, I think all Denise is saying is that we should have the word cideries listed in the definitions, and then it would say C.
Winery.
Winery. And then in your winery definition, you can say that all further references to wineries shall include cideries. And then, and then we had A1, 5.13, A1. B, where we're striking above ground portion and replacing that with floor area.
Okay, the floor area.
Yeah, the floor area of each building.
Or the square foot of each building?
I think he wants us to use floor area, because we define floor area in the definitions.
Okay.
And then I had, Randy had a question about this as well, but in A1. C, all winery buildings shall be set back at least 50 feet from any lot line. If the winery building is open to the public, that building shall be set back at least 100 feet from any lot line. Where did those numbers come from?
They were just, I kind of, when I read through a bunch of other ordinances, they were on there. So in the last meeting, we talked about like, let's get to be comfortable with what our township is comfortable with, you know?
Right. So I was wondering, is there a reason why we wouldn't stick with the standard A1 setbacks?
I don't see why not. Well, I don't, I, when I looked at different townships, I'm sorry, when I looked at different townships, Suttons Bay had the, all buildings shall be set back at least 50 feet from any lot line. If the building is open to the public, that building shall be set back at least 100 feet from any lot line. And I think that's more for noise control and to give ample space for parking. You start, you may start out with a smaller business, but after you're there for several years, become established, your business grows, then you have room for more parking, and you don't have to try and figure out how to make it all work again.
Okay, so we have to, we have to look at the parking standards then and see if they're allowed within setbacks?
Correct.
Okay, because the, so the standard setback for A1 is, the minimum front yard is 30 feet, minimum side yard is 15, minimum rear yard is 30. So just so that we're all aware of, of, um, the difference that this would make. Because I think one of the things that might happen is, um, and, and, and it's stated here to encourage the use of, existing buildings, so setback requirements may be reduced to the standards of the applicable district, subject to site plan review. So, um, that, that was my, that was my concern. That we're gonna, we're gonna either be looking at, um, variances or a lot of variances or.
Yeah, I think so. We should go with those setbacks, what you said.
The existing setbacks, I understand about the, the noise concern.
Right.
Which setbacks are you referring to?
A hundred feet.
A hundred feet.
Sadie's suggesting that we go back to the existing setbacks.
Yeah, which are what again?
Um, thirty feet for the front, these are minimums, thirty feet for the front yard, fifteen for the side yard, and thirty for the rear.
That's sweet, yeah.
It's, it's small. Yeah, but if they're, if they wanna use an existing building.
Then if they do, then it should be setback, the, the building that they have should be setback a hundred feet. I mean, if, if.
So they wouldn't be able to use an existing building?
If it's within that one hundred feet, yeah.
Well, this is saying to encourage the use of existing buildings, so the setback requirements may be reduced to the standards, like per site plan review. So like, if you wanted to open one and you had a building that would work but didn't meet the setbacks that you put here, it could be approved for that. But you're saying like, we're gonna get a lot of that.
Well, the issue, the, part of the issue that I have with this is that I don't think the planning commission should be per, you, you know, um, basically you're granting a variance because this is an ordinance, right? And so, so you're, you're allowing the PC now to step on the zoning board's toes by saying that you can just come in with a site plan and we'll review it and approve it, um, which allows you to use that existing building that's in the setback. That's the wording that's here right now. So I, I think actually if, if we are going to do this, we, and we're gonna use the fifty and one hundred feet, then we're gonna need to, um, I, I would suggest that we would change that so that they, they have to get a variance.
I'm, I'm not, do you, are you saying you think that it should be a hundred feet setback or fifty feet? As a, in the chart for setbacks, and then if they wanted something closer, they would have to come for a variance?
No, I'm not suggesting, well, this is, this is the current A one, okay? So we're not changing, we're not changing the zoning setbacks for the agricultural district. I'm not suggesting that. Um, but we're adding as a requirement for a winery or ciderie that you have, your buildings would have to be set farther back.
Maybe, maybe we should just stick with the A one requirements that are in there. I guess I didn't look at those closely enough. That are already existing.
Then you're almost demanding that a person come up with a new building.
Yeah.
I don't think we should, if, if you're having existing buildings on a farm, uh, land that's part of, uh, an existing farm market, I, are you gonna find any that are a hundred feet from the?
No, yeah, I think.
I don't think you, I was so, I, I, I have a problem with that. You'd be forcing somebody to build a new building, move a building over, or we'd be continuing getting variances where instead of allowing the people to use existing structures, uh, and they could have other, they have to have parking facilities too. You have to, you know, for the, your, your farm market, you have, uh, a lot of parking, but your building is within a hundred feet of the lot line.
Right, like, I agree, I think that, you know, writing this, like I said, I'm not, I'm not perfect at this, and a lot of this was pulled from a lot of local people and local ones that are out there, so if we have existing A one ordinances for setbacks, it makes most sense to follow that because anybody that's gonna start this is already following those setbacks.
And I've read the other township, East Bay and Milton Township's ordinances and some of this, so. And I, and I had a big question on that hundred foot, the answer was, wow, it seems.
It's far.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I don't have a problem with fifty feet, but on the other hand, I, I think our existing ordinances would allow people with existing, like they have their existing farm market. I don't know.
Well, anybody, I mean, anybody that's, has a farm, they're following the A one, the or, the setbacks we already have, so then they can use existing buildings that they have, which makes no sense, yeah.
Unless their grandfather did, and if the buildings were built before the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, for sure.
But for, um, well, a tasting room, it, you know, if you're not going to have, um, any outdoor music, sure, but if you're going to have anything like music, or a hundred people or a hundred fifty people, then there's always noise. Even when people have their backyard parties, you know, it's always, you have to invite the neighbors so that they enjoy it and they don't complain about the noise. They can just come over.
Yeah, that bothers me. Uh, we're saying a tasting room where you're producing a product and, and selling it and tasting, what's that got to do with music and events? That's an event bar again. Uh, uh, that's not a tasting room, so I, I don't see where we'd be allowing music and big events of fifty, a hundred people. That's, when I go to these wineries and I have a tasting, I have a tasting room. Now, some of them do have additional rooms where they have events. But we don't have an ordinance on event bars. I think we've talked about it.
Yeah.
And that's what, to me, is what this would be, an event. Not, not a tasting, it'd be a tasting room and an event bar where you're having music and, and all the neighbors would agree to that. That's, that bothers me.
Is the intent of this only for wine tasting or is it for events as well?
I mean, I guess it, we already were approved for some events, and this isn't just for Merlin Moss.
No, 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 no.
If you go to any winery, you go to any cider house, they all have different, and it talks about that in here, different events to promote what they make, to promote the farm, to promote people to come and learn about agriculture, to promote their products.
Yeah.
That's very common in any winery, ciderie, tasting room, so I feel like that you're gonna get whoever opens one of these to be asking that they're, have some sort of ordinance that allows for some sort of entertainment because it goes along with tasting rooms. It just, that's just how it does.
I can understand that, and I just, in a lot of cautious.
Yeah.
This might get.
Well, that's why we're writing this, so it fits our township.
Yeah, I'm, well, you know, that's.
So when we go through Randy's, and I have, I, I would have to come back to some of these as well, but we'll continue with Randy's.
Right, so. Let's see, so he was talking about the, the numbers for the setbacks.
The setbacks. We're saying that we wanna say the A one.
The current A one.
Shall be setback, so all winery buildings shall, or all wineries will follow this current, or we'll just reference that, right?
Right, the current, the setbacks of the A one district.
Yeah.
Um. I, but I think it requires further study also because we need to look at the parking situation. And, and how that works with those setbacks.
Right.
So.
Parking. You want us to look at parking now?
Sure.
Where is that on here?
Is it Article nine?
Nine one, Off Street. Barrier free parking requirements. It's on page nine-six of Off Street, Article nine. Starts on nine oh seven. Residential, business and commercial. Doesn't have really, under business and commercial, I don't know what it would call under retail center. Other retail, five spaces per one thousand square feet of net usable space.
Right, there's that, and then also the, you know, auditoriums, assembly halls, stadiums, you know, looking at, um.
Restaurants, taverns, bars and nightclubs?
Yeah, larger, if we're, you know, if, if you're thinking that you're gonna have a hundred people, you know, we need to be looking at, um, and sort of larger than probably retail space.
Yeah, and then restaurants is one space for each three persons allowed within the maximum occupancy.
Which is?
And then plus one for each three employees.
Right, so actually, it's the same. So the stadium, sports arenas, um, similar places of outdoor assembly, one parking spot for, for each three seats. So if you have, if your, if your max occupancy is gonna be a hundred and fifty, then, then you're gonna have to have fifty parking places. And then you also have to have parking places for, um, employees. So I, I think, um, looking at that in addition to the existing setbacks, uh, might help, help you with writing part of this.
But am I writing it or am I just going to refer it to here and?
I think we'd actually have to add a line, yeah.
Okay.
Which, which, what did you decide on?
Well, I'm, after reading them, I mean.
Which, which use did you choose?
Well, I was looking at auditoriums and assembly halls, stadiums, sports arenas, and then you brought up, um, restaurants. And, um, and they're all the same, one space for each three people or one space for each three seats. Does, does that make sense, Denise?
Oh, I, I see the restaurants and taverns. I just, I didn't see where the.
Oh, uh, left-hand side, um.
Under residential theaters, auditoriums. Okay, one for, it went for each two, I think, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 'cause the, the, the retail space is based on square footage. So I'm not sure that's, I mean.
That would be like Merlin Moss, they would, um.
Retail. Five spaces per one thousand square feet. I don't know if we, if we wanted to add something for farm markets or, I mean, we haven't. Since we're we're working on those, you know, we might want that as a use.
Mm-hmm.
For parking use. Because that's just, we have Uncle Bill's and, and Auto Moss.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And they're, they're not the only ones.
I don't know if I have a paper or what's going on that I'm bored of making.
No, it's really heavy.
Is anybody there?
Yeah, it's more.
Okay, um, alright, so, so, so I think, I think we need to spend some more time on that. And then, um, another thing that Randy brought up, he said we need to address limits on amplified music, um, which also, you know, we go back to the noise ordinance, right?
Yeah, where do we talk, where do I talk about that? It's under, I just wanna try and stay in order, where I get. Okay, right there. Uh, one, no.
Article thirteen.
Are, are you in, are you looking at your articles, uh, that you've written? Under private uses, uh, E?
So like page twenty-six?
I'm on twenty, okay.
Yeah, how's that using that?
It, it, as long as I know.
Page twenty-two?
The, the section that you're under, you're under A permitted uses, and then are you down into?
Yeah, no, permitted uses.
Okay, which, which, uh, letter of the alphabet? Yeah, um, E? E, I think his.
Where you refer to.
Is where he said like, this is the maximum of people allowed, I'm guessing, too.
Yeah. So you, you have hosting a private and winery sponsored events. Um, what do you consider private?
It said that. Did I put that, hold on? Private event would be like a ticketed event when people, when they do, when different wineries are different. You, they do like smaller events where you pay to get in. That's it, that would be a private event.
Yeah.
Like a private party?
Or like, if I have a private party, like, we have people a lot that come for private wagon rides, like different book clubs or different, we had some teacher groups come and they have a private farm tour. That's a private event.
Yeah, but for a tasting room.
Well, the same, you could do the same. You could have different club, different, you could have a knitting club come. You could have whoever wants to come and have a private event. That's what that would be. Where they get like their own little table and their own private little event. That would be a private event.
Okay, winery section?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a baby shower.
A baby shower, it's a big one.
bridal shower.
A bridal shower, yeah, like smaller private events, 'cause that's a private event.
Maybe not as much alcohol at the bridal, as a baby shower.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully. Um, so, uh, and I'll say as a, um, a down the road resident, that my concern is the noise and the, um, coming from, uh, events. If, if, in a tasting room, you're open seven days a week, or, that's right, so, um, and I know, I know that you've been to Townline, so they have music, but they're set way back off the road. Uh, I'm trying to envision what you expect, um, a tasting room in Whitewater Township to look like. If you could give us a couple that we could go to and see what you're thinking of?
Well, I don't really think that. That's really hard to even say. I mean, it's difficult because you are a neighbor, but, and I feel like everybody keeps turning this back to only our situation, but there's lots of farms that could make one of these and could make it work in Whitewater Township. And that one winery or tasting room that you go to is the same. They're all different and unique, and the one on the Peninsulas are very different because they're huge and they have huge overlooks. But there's a lot of smaller ones that are not like that. And as far as noise goes, I, I definitely understand your concern and I respect that. But when I look at any sort of regulations for any of these townships and what they do for noise, it's all state regulated, like, we don't, there's no noise ordinance. It's all, you follow, like, everything that I can find is through the state, and if you're not, if the police come and you're over, then that's the noise ordinance. Like, I don't understand what you want us, how we word that when that's, who writes the law for that.
Um, well, we have, uh, we have, I think, noise would be under nuisance.
There isn't one.
Uh, in, in Whitewater Township, there is. There, there is, um.
I think the county has one.
And Traverse City has one. They go by, uh, they actually go by, um, measurements that you're not allowed to go over. I did see one in one of the townships. I'm trying to flip through it real quick, um. So, one is food service, uh, completed by ten, I guess if you're having, um.
Uh, they were in a lawsuit over in one of the other counties here that went on for several years with a winery there that had events, and one person kept complaining over and over again. This went on and on to finally, it got dropped because they said this was just all from this one person that comes complaining all the time, and they went and they looked. This comes complaining all the time and they went and they looked at the noise levels and all kinds of things. And this went on for two, three years, it was in the Traverse City paper and finally, uh, the, uh, the township or county, uh, um, legal, uh, they, they just got fired of it and dropped it, they said this portion was just being unreasonable. So, but it had something to do with the noise level and they gave measurements and all kinds of stuff and it. So you wanna be careful, right, and I can.
Well, I, I would, that's what, um, I agree, you wanna be careful and I think that the noise level is an issue with, um, any business. AIS, short-term rentals, maybe, you know, if we have those. Um, and it'll have to be defined in Traverse City, they have a, a, a chart, um, voiced. One, one I read was, uh, just, uh, it's no louder than normal conversation and that's what they had in their ordinance and I thought. You know, no measurement, uh, to, you know, to support that. But I, I think that the nuisance ordinance should be, um, attended to prior to any other things that we, any other ordinances before, because, uh, the things that people complain about most, I, I always wanna bring this up. I stayed in a condo building and they had two double binders of ordinances and things and rules that you can and cannot do. And I would say three-quarters of them were noise, noise. My neighbor doing this before this time or after this time, someone moving in, someone track, talking in the hallway. So, I mean, noise is something you can't take back, um, out of the air, you can only. And if it, you know, we, we wouldn't, shouldn't have to say, you know, what would be, um, you would expect, but other people's version of noise is different than each other, so we have to give some type of, uh, level of noise. That's my little comment on noise, I don't.
Okay, well, so Grand Traverse County's noise ordinance, um, they, basically they've got quiet hours. Um, and, you know, we need to look at this further, but, um.
I would look at the city of Traverse City.
Well, Grand Traverse County. And that's why, that's what I was looking at too. But there's nothing.
You're looking at Grand Traverse County because what?
Because we're in Grand Traverse County.
Oh, yeah, I'm, the reason, only reason I'm looking at Traverse City is the way they measure noise. It's not subjective, it's, um. Decimals, yeah, they have a handheld decimal reader. Yeah, and I, I believe that they wanna use that same process with the general ordinance that Whitewater Township has on the books, except the Whitewater Township noise ordinance references enforcement through a municipal civil infraction policy that does not exist in this township.
Right, that's what I mean, that there's no.
We have an ordinance on the books, it's just not enforceable at this time by the township or by the sheriff's department. So hopefully that'll get remedied in the future.
Okay.
But we do have it in, and the sheriff would come out with a decimal reader and like a barking dog that was really loud, they would come out and see if it, if it meets that requirement. So I understand it, but the conversation I had with Mike Shea, the sheriff of Grand Traverse County.
So it's in the general ordinance book?
Yes.
Which is different than this.
Yes. But it's still enforceable and it's, it's still, there's something there, yeah.
And we were just gonna reference that that's what we're gonna follow, correct, that's what we're gonna respect. Is that right?
Well, definite, we definitely need to follow that, but I think, I think, um.
It's gonna come up with, uh, the, one of the complaints about short-term rentals is the noise. So I, I, I think we need to review the ordinance that discusses noise levels. As part of, it, it would help with, um, any ordinance.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
With the, it came up with AIS and business, industrial.
So we need to look more closely at parking, at, um, the noise ordinance. And. What, let me, let me finish out with Randy's, um, so the, the. Big wave, this is very confusing, um. 25, 26, 27, okay. So coming up with a maximum number of people allowed, um, at a guest activity held outdoors, so you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have a different, um, allowable maximum capacity for the, for the building, you know, or for the tasting area of the building and then you're gonna have a, a different one for, um, outdoor activities.
So this is where I'm struggling with that too, which I wanted to bring up, like. If you put that in this, if we put that in this ordinance instead of in the individual site plans or individual special use, or so, when, when they come for it, right, like. Say we did it and we have, you guys look at where we're putting it, our site plan, you have room for this many people, that makes sense for you. But say another farm started that is set 200 feet back and they have the space for more people outdoors. I don't think it's fair to write the ordinance for everybody across the board, I think that 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 should come at the next step in this process of whoever's applying for it. That just makes the most sense to me, otherwise I feel like that maybe somebody wants to have a really small, wants to do this, but they have a very small space and they can only have 20 people. Though we're, we're basically telling them you can never do it.
So what you're describing is something that would be based on square footage? And so you could, or what?
Well, also you have, you were thinking of an acreage limitation and if, and, and that would, um.
So again Denise?
That, there's an acreage, why does it have a minimum of 50?
50 farmable, right, or something like that?
Well, we, that was different though, because it was gonna be, we said that the acreage might not be connected to where the winery is at, so.
Well, I, yeah, if, are you have, I thought we were talking about on, onsite tasting rooms, a manufacturer.
Well, we are, but we're saying like.
Not offsite, offsite.
It is onsite, but like, it has to be onsite, like, how do I, how do we, how do we hear about it?
So the, so the 50 acres refers to where the fruit is being grown and, and that does not need to be a contiguous 50-acre parcel?
It has to be all together, they don't have much.
So, but the, but the winery.
Within the township.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would qualify that within the township because I could have 10 acres here.
Yeah, no, within that, within Whitewater Township, but they don't have to be all together.
Right.
Does that make sense?
But the winery would be on some of the acreage.
And, and it would be owner occupied.
Yes.
Yeah, those are all.
So.
I don't think we have that.
Well, we were talking about how, if there's a maximum capacity for an outdoor event and, and.
Yeah.
I'm kind of. What I would picture, and you guys don't have to agree with me at all, is that it's based on square footage per person, similar to the way the parking is written, um, with a maximum capacity. So, so if somebody, you know, wants to devote 20 acres, you know, to this outdoor event space, they, they can't, you know, because we wouldn't allow that many people.
It isn't, uh, as I recall Milton Township in Elk Lake, I mean Elk Rapids Township. Didn't they have a smaller number than 50 acres, 25 acres, I forget exactly, but I thought this was bigger than any of the ones I had, I'd looked at. And I don't care, other than some other farmers might wanna do it, but not have that many acres. I don't know if that's a reasonable amount or, it just seemed to be more than the other townships, but. Yeah, that's just a question, I don't, I don't really care.
And how many acres does it take to make viable fruit production to create wine, I don't know.
There's, um, I believe there's a chart in Sutton's Bay Township that they have, like some acres for so many gallons produced of, of wine. Uh, and then you can only sell the, in a tasting room, you can only sell what you produce there for an onsite.
Which I think is how.
That, that's, that's might be their specific thing, but that's not, that's all regulated by the MLCC.
Yeah, there's onsite, that's right, there's onsite, do you have that little chart that they, um, has onsite, offsite regulations? On, onsite is the manufacturer has, uh, you produce and you sell your, um, your product in your tasting room, you don't, um, sell other products. And then manufacturing offsite is, and, and offsite, you could be a manufacturer and put your product in five different, you have to have five different locations that you sell your, your, your product.
So if you look at the MLCC codebook, which I sent you guys a copy of this, if you go.
Is it in there?
It tells you a ta, that their definition of a tasting room means any of the following locations. A, a location on the manufacturing premises, premises of a brewer or microbrewer where the brewer or microbrewer may provide samples or sell at retail for consumption on or off premises or both beer manufacturers. B, a location on or off manufacturing, like there's A, B, C, D and E, that's like, that's what's defined as a tasting room by the MLCC.
Yes, yeah, I, correct, um, is this in your, is this like a picture page with a, a one-page chart? Is that what you're looking at that you sent?
No, I pulled all this right from the MLCC.
Okay.
Liquor company, and I, and I apologize, I meant to send this to you guys. It's in the zip file, I sent you all these facts and that, but I don't know why it didn't, why it didn't get to you guys. But there's a ton of information in there on what their definitions of all these different things are, what they regulate and what local government regulates.
Yeah, I was looking at the, the cheat sheet that they have on their website and, um, there's onsite and offsite and, and Rand, and that's what we were trying to write an ordinance for onsite. It's, it's, I recall, not offsite.
There's not, there can't be a difference though, and they, they don't define that separately. Like your license isn't separate when you go to get your license from the state.
Um, yeah, there is, um, well, I, I'm not 100% sure, um, but there, there's different reg, there's different things you can do with an onsite and an offsite.
Yeah, there's difference, yes, but.
I, I try, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to my web, the white, website and see what I can pull up.
But your wine, your, your tasting room, you, uh, doesn't, I guess. Your total production of the wine could be from three or four different patches of land that are part of your farm. Where it didn't all have to be on the site where the tasting room is. It could be you got 20 acres a mile away where you have your vineyards.
Yes.
In fact, your vineyards may be in back roads and you have your wine tasting section on a, you know, a fax where your, yeah, not produced on an highway, but yet they are all grown on your farm.
Right.
But then you can use.
Yeah.
If I wanted to use a specialty apple from another farmer, I can, you can do that.
Right, right.
If you get froze out, you can use somebody else's fruit, like you can do that. And you have to take, there are certain regulations with how much you produce, like what part of the production takes place on your farm or what part of the production takes place somewhere else too, doesn't.
And that's all based on the state.
It's all by MLCC, yes, and it's very, like, the fire chief was saying, there's so many, it's like, this is the one hoop with whoever decides to do this, but then working with MLCC, this is a whole nother, very strict process, so. But what we're, but we were talking about numbers, so how should we do that, and how should we change that, so.
Well, I think, I think that's a conversation that you could have with the fire chief, um, because they set maximum occupancies for buildings and they probably set maximum occupancies for outdoor spaces as well.
I should ask him, yeah, okay. How outdoors, that's, uh. He might too, he has that experience of knowing how they.
Might be a good resource.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we'll definitely wanna invite him as we get closer.
Yeah.
Um, on this as well, but, um, but, but I think that's a perfect opportunity to bring him in.
To talk to him about that stuff.
Okay, what is, who else had comments?
Oh, I, I just, I missed that, cause I marked out the, the name of the person that.
The fire chief.
Oh, okay, yeah. David, did you have any comments you wanted to?
No, no. Nothing additional.
Carol?
Yeah, 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 um, I had a question about the, um, A permitted uses. B, the above-ground portion of the building shall be 20,000 square feet. Um, most of the tasting room regs that I saw were like 700 or 800 or 1,000 and even, um, I don't know why, where the 20,000 is coming from for a tasting room, it's like.
Well, what do we think, I, this is not just me, whatever we think.
Is supermarket or something, uh, I would think, um, the ones I've seen are under 5,000, most of them. A couple of the smaller wine producers on Lelandal Peninsula, I haven't been to a larger. Peninsula, old, um, Old Mission Peninsula has live, large wineries, but, um, Lelandal County, the ones I've been in, they've been smaller, and then Milton is very small. Um, and Elk Rapids Township, um, is, I think, 4,300, the one I went to, just Town Line.
Does that include their bathroom where they process it?
Yeah, yeah, there, so, um.
So that might be a clarification that we need to make, whether this is the square, whether, whether, cause you're talking about each building, but there might be a building where they're doing the processing or the blending in the same building as the tasting room, right?
The, the larger wineries are separate. The, they make their wine in one building and their, um, tasting room and, and is completely separate.
Right.
And then when you take the tours, you, you go, uh, the cideries, they're, they're smaller. It's, it's the ones that I know of, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, um, if there's some wineries or cideries that we could visit that you think would be, you're, you envision being in the Whitewater Township and maintaining the rural character?
Uh, I, I guess.
Well, that's, that's something that we can all kind of work on, right?
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, 20,000 is probably excessive.
Right.
I mean, I think that we can easily go down from that and just look like looking at an average size, like pole building and stuff is.
Yeah, I've been to some big ones and smaller, but here we have an extension of a farm market where the winery is the primary.
No, that's for, this isn't just for me though, this could be for anybody.
She's talking about for the whole township.
Right, so, so it, it could be, there could be no farm market, it could just be the winery or the, you know, the tasting room.
Right, tasting room.
Yeah.
But to Denise's point, I mean, I've been in tasting rooms that are 1,500, 2,000 square feet. I mean, they're not big.
Yeah, they don't have to, I think 20,000 is excessive, very excessive. So what do you think is like, yeah, I mean, even a 50 by 50 building, like if you had an existing pole barn, you know, is. How many square feet is that?
2,500.
Yeah, so.
So.
What's a more comfortable number?
Well, uh, Sutton, I'm just throwing out, uh, Sutton's Bay zoning is 1,500, no more than 1,500 square feet per tasting, retail, sales, food service areas combined. That, this square footage includes both indoor and outdoor spaces, the space may be separate or attached to the processing facility. And, um, APNE, I don't know if they even have one.
So that's, that one's pretty restricted, 1,500 and it's the indoor and outdoor space.
So I'm not sure which, uh, yeah. It, it, it varies so greatly, um, but you, you don't wanna include the processing in with the tasting.
Right.
Square footage, basically.
Do we want to say 1,500 to 2,000, like, I just can't, I guess I need help with some guides, I don't want to make, I can't just put all these in here and then come back and then change it again, so let's just agree on it, I'm like, put it in there. Like, I don't know what you guys think.
So I, I, I have to say that I, the one that I go to the most is Town Line. And, and I do like, um, the venue, I like the size of the, of the, of the whole operation. Um, but I've been to a tasting for members only at another winery over in Lelandon County. And I, I don't know, their tasting rooms aren't very large.
Well, so we're, we're, what we're setting up here is, is a maximum square footage, right? So you, so if somebody has, you know, they're working with a smaller area and their property, they can go smaller, for sure.
The, the tasting room separately, I would say probably under 2,000 square feet for most of them.
I think that's a good number.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then if you want to do a combined, if, I think you should leave it separate because as you grow your business, you're going to increase your, your manufacturing portion, you may not group...
Well, and also sometimes you might be manufacturing in the part of a building that you have that's already, like a family storage building, because it has to be HVAC, so you don't do that.
Use one of your other buildings for that, yeah.
How many farms in our township are growing grapes?
None, one, maybe two. The only one that is, is they're going to rip them all out, so.
I mean, yeah, so...
We have a few.
You're going to be, the tasting room is going to be for grapes that, and with a farm market, it's produced on your farm. That's it.
Well, this covers cideries, and we have a lot of apple trees.
Yep, okay.
Cherries.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Cherries, peaches, right, you know?
You can make, depending on what license you get from the MLCC, you can...
A tasting room, okay, is separate, as we said, from your production, but it's four things grown on your property, whereas, you know, there are tasting rooms over the state I've seen, but none of the product is made there, it's just in a mall or somewhere.
Right, it's...
And that's still totally different. We're talking about a farm market that wants to have tasting room for wine produced on our property, or could be for other fruits all produced there. So that's probably not a real big tasting room. It could be in conjunction with their current, uh, building there or something totally different. And, and that's one of the problems I had with having unique setback requirements, so you just don't think that applies. So, so I think, you know, that's, that might, yeah, but what rationale do we, we have for making it any given size, you know, maximum or minimum? What, what rationale can we explain for what we, you know, agree on?
In, in relation to the production or the tasting room?
The tasting room.
I don't think we're really referring to the production buildings in this, right? We're just talking about tasting rooms.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the, um, the licensing from the liquor commission is based upon the local approval required for the commission approval. So we're deciding what we want in our township.
Okay.
And you're asking, what right do we have, and?
The township.
Yeah, we do have the right.
Yeah, we have the right.
It just seems arbitrary, I think, is what counts.
Well, you're saying it's not some arbitrary number that...
No.
Doesn't consider the...
You guys...
The final size of the thing, yeah, I don't know.
I just was like, I swore I addressed some of these things in the ordinance. The one that Randy sent that's edited is the old ordinance that I...
Well, oh, it, it's true, but this is what we're working with.
Yeah, but the one that's in your, the one that's in the zip file is way more specific. I addressed almost all of these things.
Okay, okay.
Noise, I mean, they still need, like it says, like, "Event noise shall conform to the state for disturbing the peace," which is outlined in the State of Michigan Penal Code under MCL 750.17, like, I was like, I addressed all these things, so. I addressed it twice in here, noise, so I think we need to pull up that one, and he, he edited the wrong one.
Okay, so, 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 did, what other concerns do you have? I just want to make sure that Sadie knows moving forward, she may have already addressed them in the newer version.
The square footage, um, it, it's, I think it's, uh, it, it's too, it's too much for our...
Yeah, we said less than 2,000.
So we're saying 2,000, yes.
That was the, the main thing. The other, um, the only other thing I'm, I'm, I, I'm not so much concerned about, um, the size of the event, you know, um, uh, some people, I, I, I'll just... I expect every person that starts their business will grow. I don't expect them to stay small, they, and they, but that may be what they wish. So I, I, I want them to take into consideration that, um, the, like, the noise level as it, um, noise doesn't, um, in, in the township, people want to maintain a rural character, and they move to the country to be closer to nature, and hear the birds twittering in the morning and all that. They didn't come here to, you know, listen to tires on the, screeching on the highway and all that. But inevitably, we're going to increase the population, and we live on Elk Lake Road and, you know, summer traffic noise. It's just there, we, but we don't necessarily want to add to it. So, um, for my, my major concern is, um, the noise control aspect of it. You can do it with landscaping, you can do it with setbacks, um, you can, some ordinance has, allows only indoor music. You know, it's just what we, what people want in Whitewater Township. And, and for me, it's the noise level. And the off-street, make sure all the parking's off-street, and I go to the venue set offering that. I mean, when I go out, that's what I'm seeking, I, I don't go to, unless I'm in Traverse City, then you know, you just, you walk down the sidewalk, you open the door, and there you are. But, um, we're talking about rural, so I want to...
Well, I, yeah, and obviously I'm going to respect that, I mean, I've lived there, and live right there, and that's, I feel like the whole reason that a lot of people in the agriculture industry would move to do something like this is so that they can keep their family farms and keep it looking like it is, so.
Yeah.
It's, you got to know that's on the top of our, most people's lists as well that want to do this, not to, not to change everything about this area.
Yeah, one thing, uh, you're thinking north of Elk Rapids, uh, about 10 miles, there's a winery off to the side that has a tasting room out in the field. That's a, that's a small tasting room, nothing else. Uh, there's, well, you have to be big enough, they have a bar, uh, they have to...
Royal, are you talking about Royal Farms?
I think that's what it is.
Water, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of basic.
Yeah.
Now, and this is a little different than basic, but then there's the great big ones that are out on the, uh...
Yeah, because they're all bay and, yeah.
And, and, you know, you have to have room to store your wine bottles that you're going to sell to the people that come in and do the tasting.
Yeah.
So you'd have to have a certain number of square feet, I don't know what it is, if everybody's acting with 2,000. That's a starter.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Are we all comfortable at 2,000?
Yeah, I think we're past that, right?
Okay.
Is that something you would be adding to your building, or would it be contained within the current building?
Well, this, we, we need to keep the discussion more general, I think. Um, and if Sadie's company comes in for, um, a site, site plan review, then we can get those questions answered. Okay. All right, so noise, parking, um, square footage for the out, out, for any outdoor events. And, um, using the most current version of the ordinance that you were in.
That's why I was, I was like, why is this not making sense to me? And then I looked at, look at this one, it's, it just makes me so mad, I spent so much time on this, and we, I just got the wrong one. This one's like lettered, like it's...
I know, it, it, I'm sorry, but we, this is the one that I saw, so.
No, it's not your fault. I don't know how, how that happened.
Yeah, well, this, this goes back to that discussion about having a drive for the planning commission where we all have access to the stuff that's put out there, so we need to take that up with the board.
Yeah, it seems a little ancient.
Okay, are we, okay, moving on?
Yep.
Can I, just as a, as a question, did we want the planning commission to go to a couple of cideries or wineries as, you know, any, as homework?
Well, that would be fun.
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we need to, like, do a field trip, but we could, like, each pick a point.
We could all choose, we could all choose one and come back.
I've, I've been to different ones, I've done a wine tour, so I don't normally do that anymore, but, I mean, I, I don't...
It's just a recommendation, it's not a point.
I mean, if there's something that's, like, an ROS came up and said, this is kind of, uh, one that kind of meets, you know, all, hits all the right buttons for us as we think of it, then yeah, go out and look at it.
Okay.
Be like a site plan review sort of thing.
Well, I, I agree with Denise, if Town Line, for me, it ticks a lot of the boxes because it's, you know, it's picturesque, it still feels rural. Um, they've got an outdoor space, they've got a pretty good size in, interior space. Um, so, that's not a bad one, if you feel like it's some type of...
Well, I've, I've been there, uh, but I'm not a cider person. But to me, it equates to the one near Elk Rapids, which is, it's too small, but, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Rain, what's our next step now on this then? So to review what?
I think, I think we need to get the, the, your current version with the information that we, the, kind of hitting on the topics, if it doesn't already, that we've discussed, um, like the parking and the ex, the square footage for the exterior, talking to the fire chief.
Yep.
Um, and then I think once, once we get to a point where everybody's comfortable with, with the way the ordinance is written, the next step is attorney review and then public hearing.
Yeah, so, so I can understand that attorney review can happen in between them two.
Before we're, like, final?
Well, yeah, like, say we agree on it, and then we want to put a public hearing, I can go to attorney review during that month off, right? And so the next meeting could be a public hearing, is that correct?
I don't know for sure.
That's how I understood it, but...
Okay.
We'll see.
I have a question, just wrapping it up, that should make additional modifications to the draft version of the document. The PC will, will review that again before...
At the next meeting.
Making recommendations, okay, thank you.
Did, did you want to cover the last one? Um, I, I can't see it, the wine must have a minimum of 50 planted acres?
Yeah, I, I did.
Adjust that. That would be like 100 acre minimum?
So, in the...
It's over half.
In the, in the altered one, I said, the newest one, the winery shall own a minimum, shall own a minimum of 50 planted acres of farm crops within Whitewater Township that are used in the production of products produced by the licensee.
Okay. So, can I ask, did you, the additional special conditions, additional conditions of special uses, the minimum requirements of the, um, will be, the parcel is at least a number of acres. And Randy put 75, and I, I'm not sure, but because you put 50, and, and I think you want it to be more than half of the acreage, that would be 100 acres.
I don't know, I'm not sure, like, more than half, I don't know what you mean. Um...
Is that like, on average, if someone has 100 acres, only half of it is planted?
And, and a lot of, the other, um, couple of the other ordinances, they have like over half of the acreage, kind of like, and, uh, over half of what you produce is from your, your property. And, um, I, that's what I've seen, is that if you have 100 acres, over 50, you have to be produce, wine producing or cider producing, or whatever you're producing. Um, is that what you were intending with that question, the number of acres?
Okay. I don't understand what she's asking. Um, she's asking, when you're talking about the parcel area?
On, on Article 13, 17.
So, so, what, can you describe, what is the parcel area?
Yeah, so this was rewritten, we rewrote that, because when we met the last meeting, we were talking about this. And that's when we decided, you can't say parcel, because...
There, there...
It's broke up, yeah, so we said, so I changed it to, "Winery shall own a minimum of 50 acres, 50 planted acres of farm crops within Whitewater Township." So it's not parceled anymore.
So, that could, that would, wouldn't be a planted, okay. As a second, could it be leased property, farmers do, I don't know about this township, but, I don't know. Fine, they do leased property and grow, I don't know if that flies right or not, very narrow is the problem. The person may own, have 25 acres that he owns, but then he leases another 50 or something, and, you know, would that count? Yeah, I would think, I would think so.
Right, yeah. So we have to figure out how to cover that, yeah.
What if a lease terminates after this is approved?
Well, then he...
Gets another lease.
I, I...
A lot of times, a farm will own the trees, but not the land, a lease will work out that way. Because the farm will, they might lease the land, normally when you lease the land, you're not going to grow fruit, trees, so you're going to grow row crops, because it's year to year. If you're leasing land and you're buying trees to plant on that land, that's just a bad investment, because you can't take those, yes.
Same with grapes.
So, most of the time, a leased land is going to be a row crop, not, not a, not a fruit tree.
It wouldn't include that, though.
But if it is a fruit tree, they still own 50 acres of, they still own 50 acres of trees, or they own land, they own the farm, so the farm would still technically own that, I guess. That's getting real technical.
Uh, let's forget it.
Well, it, it's something to think about for the next discussion, because it, it's more technical and, um, you have to think about corporations coming in and, and buying up farms or leasing land, uh, then, you know?
Yes, uh, no.
But anyway, another time.
Well, you got to live on the property.
Yeah.
You got to live in Whitewater Township.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Something else that I need to work on to make it...
We'll review your current.
Yeah, if you, review the one that was set in the zip file, along with all, like, I sent a ton of information in there, like, tons of MLCC, a ton of quick links of where to find more information, and then you can just email me, so I can... I'm, I apologize that, I don't know how that happened, but, um, it's frustrating. But we'll figure it out.
Okay, so the next item is the, um, the ROS. And, um, we have a copy of the application that was made available here in her, um, copy form, and also there was a link on the township website to the application, and they were due on June 25th. We received, oh, we got, two, three. Four applications. We need a minimum of, um... We need a minimum of three people on the the R O S committee, in addition to myself and one other planning commissioner. So, you have copies of their applications. I've redacted, you know, addresses and contact declarations, but in other ways. And so, the first question is, do we feel like we have a large enough pool from which to select? Or do we want to put the application out again with, we ran an advertisement in Elk Rapids News and the Traverse City Newspaper? And, did it get on the mill creek?
It went on Mill Creek and I put it on Facebook.
On Mill Creek and Facebook and on the township website. Unfortunately, not on the homepage, which we would have done a little better, but.
It went in the Elk Rapids.
Oh, the chamber?
Yeah, the chamber notes.
Okay. And the, the, the people who applied have a tremendous amount of experience. Most of them have served on the plant, the planning commission or the township board. And I asked them, you'll notice, on the, on the application, in the interest of creating a balanced committee, I asked them if they were affiliated with a short-term rental anywhere. And also, if they felt that they could be unbiased and if they thought that we should allow S T Rs with no regulations with regulations or ban them altogether. So. So, that's where we are right now. So, I guess the first question is, do we feel that we have an adequate pool from which to select the R O S committee, or do we want to go back out?
I think it would be helpful to have more applications, more people than just four.
Okay.
We're keeping three?
A, a minimum of three. We said five to seven.
Yeah, I think that's what we talked about last meeting.
I think that these four people are very qualified, but I would like to have a more, another person that is no, no, no for on short-term rentals. And the, because you have two, three that want short-term, or with short-term rentals, with regulations, I believe. Or with, with, with no regulations or with regulations, and two with regulations, and then one, it says ban or no preference. And I, I'm, I would like to have that discussion of, of, within the R O S, of people who that, that don't want short-term rentals and to work with the people who want to have short-term rentals with regulations. I'd rather have them have that discussion, so that they can maybe compromise, hopefully.
So, so the thing to keep in mind is that the R O S is not going to be making any decisions. We're not going to be interpreting data. We're going to be collecting data and doing research. So, so, so while we still want, I agree with you, we want a balanced committee for sure. We won't be, do, everything will just get presented to the planning commission. And so, the data interpretation and the research interpretation will take place in the planning commission meetings. And, and the writing of the ordinance, just like what, what we're just doing, will take place in the planning commission meetings. So, I want to make sure that everybody's.
Yeah, and this isn't just about short-term rentals, right? We talked about that at the last minute. Yes.
It could possibly be the road ordinance, although that's sounding more like it's an engineering situation. And whatever else the planning commission takes on. So. I think that's fine, if we want to go back out. So, then, do we want to try to be able to review these and, and the new ones and select the committee for the, at the August meeting?
Yeah, I think we have a good game plan of how we're going to get more, because it's just, it's unfortunate to keep pushing it out.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we could try one more month, and if we don't get any more, then we have four.
Yeah.
That's what we have.
Right, okay. Okay, well, then, we will, we'll I would say, as, at a minimum, do the same push that we did before, if we can do.
I have that. Did everybody get that? Did I send it to you, the picture, the?
I think you sent it to everybody. Yeah, I think you did.
So.
The what?
The ad for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For this, right? Everybody got that? Yeah. So, we can share that in other ways. I mean, I don't know. Social media is huge to push it that way.
Does, does.
Get the word out to people.
Does Whitewater still have their?
Their newsletter?
The webpage, Whitewater Rocks or?
I think that's on Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we put it on that? That's where a lot of people read.
Where did you, you put it in, on Facebook?
My own.
Oh, just.
And on Merle Moss and.
Yeah, I think that the Whitewater Township, the, I think it's Williamsburg Rocks. But yeah, that's the one that everybody goes to.
I'm not on Facebook. Is it something that you could handle?
I could, yeah.
I can, I can send you the electronic version. I can send you the wording of the ad that we ran in Elk Rapids News, for instance.
I can post it on there. I can post it on there.
I think it was in our packet too, wasn't it, the wording?
Yeah. Did, and you, you want to, you will be willing to post it on the Whitewater Township, I mean, Williamsburg Town. You, you know which one that is?
I'll find it, yeah.
Okay. That was pretty, that was used a lot during the elections.
Rain, what is the selection process going to be? How, like, say we get eight applications, how will we be handling that?
Well, we'll, I'll be reviewing them.
Yep.
And then, I, I think a phone conversation will take place.
After we reviewed them, and then after that?
And then, after that, I, I thought we would, we'd be meeting. You know, I mean, we, we're basically selecting the members of the committee. And so, the phone conversation is to make sure that they're still interested and understand the, what they're getting themselves into, in terms of the time commitment, because I know that at least one of, of the people that applied, who I, I had spoken with her on the phone previously, and she travels quite a bit, and, and our meetings have to be in person. So. So, so I don't know how that's going to work out.
So, you envision that at the next meeting, if we have maybe just these or more, we would select at the next meeting? And then?
Right.
And then somebody would have a follow-up phone call with them?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure that, that they, you know, that we don't need to go to whoever was next.
Yeah.
In line.
Makes sense.
I know Keith is very anxious to get going on this. So, and, and the, the S T R topic for sure needs to, he needs to be moving on that.
So, are you, how many, there's a minimum and a maximum for the R O S?
Right, it needs to be an odd number, even though we don't vote.
Yes.
And there, we planned on two planning commission members. And then, at least three citizens.
Or, or it could be five, just an odd number.
Three or, three or five, right.
Yeah, because some of these topics, you know, people, it's.
There's going to be attrition for sure, because I think the majority of the interest is short-term rentals.
Yeah.
So, I think we will probably have to kind of keep a running file of people that are interested, you know, and are willing to work on capital improvements, you know, if someone drops out.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, please, please review these. Let me know if you have any questions or if you have an issue with the application. It was reviewed by Randy and Linda, and I think, I don't know, well, and definitely Keith, before it went out.
The application or the app, lease?
The application.
Okay.
The blank application was, was reviewed before it went public. Okay. Any other questions about the R O S? Oh, the other thing is, I've been told that, so the R O S is not subject to the Open Meetings Act, so people are welcome to come to the meeting, but there will not be any public comment or public hearings. So, if they want to monitor, you know, like what we're doing, how we're dating, how we're collecting data, what type of research we're doing, is totally fine, but there isn't a public comment opportunity at those meetings. Okay, I lost my. Okay, the online zoning survey and zoning audit, audit. So, in your packet is the zone, a copy of the zoning audit, and we should all be taking time to go through that and see if we have any questions. The, the consultants will be joining us at the August meeting. And please make sure that you fill out the online zoning survey. If you need the link again, let me know, and I'll forward you Deb's email that gets the link in it. The, the zoning survey is strictly to create a list, is to prioritize the things that we're going to be looking at.
Oh, I, I found that very difficult to prioritize.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it was not easy.
I, I don't think I did actually, so.
You said, oh, you want me to fill, okay, to fill that out and check out the boxes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did it, or you clicked on a link?
Yeah.
You did it online? You did it already?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I thought this was well-written. Wow.
Yeah.
It was a depth.
Right. This.
The audit.
Did you get that?
It's in, it's in your packet. It's at the end of the packet.
Yeah, I can go down to the. I don't record.
Here's the cover of it. It's on page thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Master plan. Oh, that? Thirty-two, okay, yeah, I went through all of that.
Okay.
Twice.
Twice, okay. It takes at least twice.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions about that? So, we'll want to be pretty comfortable with it for the August meeting. So, if you have any questions, you can ask. I don't know why I struggle with your name, Giffles Lobster. Okay.
Comfortable with what?
With the, with the audit, you know, like where you, you've got your questions in mind and that sort of thing. Okay, new business. The rural readiness, it says great application. I think it's supposed to be grant.
Randy Melnick completed a letter of intent for the rural readiness grant program. And it was due June thirtieth, and it was submitted. It will be, all of the letters of intent will be reviewed. And then, the week of August eleventh, they'll let the applicants know which of their letters were accepted for a full application for the grant. And, and that is a fifty thousand dollar grant, and his, our request was based on the the amount of the grant to cover our professional planning and engineering fees, to update our zoning amendments. So, we'll go the week of August eleventh. If, if anybody sees any other grants that you think might be useful, that we would, could apply for, that would be great. Because we always need more money.
Our next meeting, let's confirm, is August sixth. That was on our sheet and on the website.
Okay. Yeah, I had a document about our meetings, and it said that this meeting was supposed to be on the seventh.
You mean the ninth?
The ninth.
The ninth.
Or, anyway.
Yeah.
And then somehow we changed it.
Right.
To today. I, I don't recall that exactly, but yeah, I was just, okay, I wasn't crazy.
No, you weren't crazy.
So, and, and we're not exactly sure what happened there, but because the meeting was advertised correctly and posted on the township website, that's what made it okay for us to continue meeting today. Public comment. Anybody?
That would be me.
I guess.
Pump through that real, real quick. Yeah, just a couple of quick notes. When you got to the wineries, I understand now that it was a mistake, but the copy you had in the, in the ordinance, or in the packet, was only Randy's notes?
It wasn't the ordinance?
Well, no, it had the ordinance with Randy's notes on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Randy's notes on top of it.
You didn't read it.
Yeah, it was hard to read.
There are big chunks in the ordinance that are missing.
Well, it didn't matter anyways, I knew right.
I know, it was even the wrong word. So, that was. They need to be readable, so if it has notations, the notations have to be, you know, notations are great for everybody to be able to see, but they do need to be to the side. Real quick on the winery ordinance. I'm glad we're doing it. It's a long time coming. There are a couple of things that you may or may not be aware of. We do have, under temporary uses, a special event required, or allowance, where you can come in and get a permit for a special event. If you're doing a sidewalk sale or something unusual, any of our businesses currently are actually supposed to be doing that. That would be one tool that you could use with your wineries. It is perfectly permissible to have different standards for an old or historic building closer to your setbacks, as opposed to a new build. There's nothing wrong, that's not something that needs a variance. You can write it in, if it's properly worded, to the ordinance, saying additional allowances will be made for older, existing or historic buildings. With the noise ordinance, I strongly encourage all of you to, okay, beg, borrow, steal, FOIA, whatever it takes, get a copy out of the township, which I understand with general ordinances, is like pulling hands teeth. Get a copy of the ordinance. We have a noise ordinance on the books. It might even be the only one they have posted online. Okay. Don't count on that for anything. If the county has an ordinance or their state's standards, you can reference it, but that ordinance isn't going to do you much good. So, if there are other references that you can use, county, or Grand Traverse County, we can use their ordinance, state standards, they're going to do you functionally a lot more good. And I want to really highlight Carl's note. You're setting up event barns. You are setting up event barns with this. There is a lot of case law, not necessarily on the books, but case law from court cases, that a winery is a, weddings, events are a normal part of having a winery. You need to be conscious of that. What you are doing is not just setting up winery tasting rooms. You are setting up winery tasting rooms and event venues. I really encourage you to consider, and I haven't seen the ordinance that you actually meant to present.
No, I'm not seeing.
Yes, but yeah. But I really encourage you to make sure you look, at looking at that, and you might even want to split it into two different ordinances, or at least treat it as two separate things. Once you're allowing wineries to have events, farms can have events, if you don't have the rules for events, you've just allowed them, permitted them without guidelines. When it was presented previously, because we did try to pass an event barn ordinance, years back, then it blew up in our face. And that was, again, an attorney thing. But, one of the things, the ways that we handled the music and sound, and you had a lot of good discussion on that, was strained or natural instruments were allowed outdoors, amplified music was only allowed indoors. It's obviously going to carry, but it makes a huge difference to neighbors. And hopefully, my last item, on your setbacks. Using the existing setbacks as a minimum standard for historic buildings, fine. Fifteen feet is not an appropriate setback for a wedding venue. Perfectly acceptable, perhaps, for a tasting room that's the size of this building, but not for a wedding venue. So, you're going to need to maybe, and again, I haven't seen the ordinance, you may have already addressed this, but make sure you may need different standards, because you're talking about something that's a whole lot more than just a farm market or a farm, when you're talking about a live band and a hundred and fifty guests. That's, that's an entirely, entirely different issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, discussion or comments? Everybody have anything they haven't had a chance to say?
I, I, the comment on the Randy's.
Comments?
Their, their, well, their notes and everything. Uh, Grandpa showed me how to do that a couple of years ago. Uh, and, and if you take your agenda and, or the document it is and you're on file, and then you're gonna do all these things. Well, I spent, what I did in fifteen minutes with a pencil took me all day to do that way. And because I don't do that, and Randy does this all the time and one of my previous lice, that would have been a neat thing. I've been doing it twice a week. It took me all day and it was absolutely useless to me where my pencil been, which is why I need a hard copy.
Yeah.
I've been twenty-five years away from computers. I have this in my daily life and I
Carol, I'm gonna get you the hard copies.
Yeah, I need, I, you know, what you student, Lois, Trinity, told us, you know, did we need it or not? Or, early on, we didn't know, it was right there, four, five, six days before the meeting.
Is that what you're gonna do? Are you gonna have it here for him?
Yeah, just, um
Having it here is
I'll come here and print it out and put it on, on the counter over there.
Having it, the day of the meeting is useless.
Right, that's right, right.
I need it, I had it taken, I brought it on the scroll, and then I look at this and if there's something that needs to be printed out, yeah, I can, you know, like to, certainly, I, I look at this, but
Do you have a printer at home?
Oh, yeah, I can fit on seventy-five pages. I did that once and then, no, some of these menus, some of these things are a hundred, forty pages.
They are, you're right, I was coming to print it.
They were, they were always printed out for us. I don't know why that isn't part of, I, I'm not saying it's her job, but it was Lois's job. She was our recording secretary.
Yeah.
And, uh, Deb does it for us.
Yeah.
But, you know
I'm not sure Deb's job, yeah. Yeah, but, well, I, I've been appointed, you asked me to do it. I did, and actually, I, I printed out my, my, uh, agenda, so I got a good idea. So, anyway.
Any other comments?
I have just a question on that. Um, Deb had mentioned that Keith wanted hard copies too?
Yes. Keith, Keith texts me every meeting at twenty minutes after six, uh, can you print me a copy of the packet? Every, and, and I get, yeah. And I may look at my phone, but normally I'm not doing, doing other things, so I'm usually printing it at ten to seven.
Okay.
So, but he likes a hard copy as well, just so you know, if he's
Thank you.
If he's here, he'll want one as well.
I'm gonna print one for me too.
Anybody else?
I want a hard copy once in my whole life.
Do you want a hard copy?
I mean, if you're printing them, I'll take one, but I don't have to have one, so.
Okay, I, I, it's easier at a meeting to have this while I'm doing something else than that.
Right.
I don't have to.
I usually print out a hard copy for myself.
I'll, I'll take a hard copy if you're doing it.
Okay, so, I'm gonna print five hard, I'll print, uh, five hard copies and the first five get a
I'll even, I'll even pick up his and deliver it to him.
Okay, yeah.
You're a printer, Carl.
Well, no, this was automatic.
It's okay, it's okay.
This was all different.
We got it, we got it.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, continuing education, I think, I think Randy put this in here so that, to give us further information about, um, additional rezonings, like the AIS, it was support for that.
Yeah.
Um, very helpful. And, um, should be adjourned unless anybody is
Please.
Motion made to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, and also, if I can just reiterate how helpful it is if you make a motion or something. To say your last name.
Bozler, motion to adjourn.
Because there may be periods of meetings that I'm not here and I'm strictly going from a recording.
Okay.
And, and Sadie seconded something tonight and it was very soft.
Okay.
Uh, so, last names?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, nice job, you guys.
So what's our issue with, with the Zoom? Why isn't Zoom working?
I can answer that. I tried to start it up and I couldn't get to it, I called tech support and, uh, I pressed the button on the back and if you touch it more than, uh, two or three times, it just started to act.
Have you, have you been trained to set up Zoom?
I've, to get it started? Yeah, I have, but it wasn't
Cause I thought it was an explanation or a machine.
Yeah, there, there is, it's right here, it's, it's, if, there is, if you turn it on and it comes up to the, the PC a meeting, uh, the recent, it's no problem, it wasn't here.
I, I, I haven't been trained, but I would ask for the training, because we can eliminate It's also common about not having a field, yeah, I, I agree. We need to Oh, we knew he wasn't gonna Yeah, I know. I'm ready a lot hotter in here tonight.
I have a question.
Maybe just book a teenager for a monthly
So when would those be ready, do you think?
When the agenda copies?
Yeah.
Well, he should, he usually, he usually makes a board, yeah, so whether, how many, he does, he does the packet and, um
Do you wanna send an email when they're ready?
Same.
There, yeah.
It's usually, um
Yeah, you want me to be organized. Sure. Can you, yeah.
It's usually before the meeting, it's really, we do go online to see when they're posting, Deb
Yeah.
Should be an email, remind me, five copies, hard copies, need to
Now we're in trouble.
Yeah, and that, then that way then comes
That way you wanna put the burden on me now to get Carl's.
Well, no, I just, definitely nice, I'll come down and print them, I just need a reminder sometimes, if I don't put it out, I fall
I, I, there's this thing, yeah, this is a, this is type of my, uh, gear.
I always
Attorney, and that's why I would guide you, you need priorities and I just like scroll through it quick.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm
What about
I have the files, I'm on the Yeah, the deputies aren't, like, yeah, there's a new deputy, yeah, so who it is.
I thought Miranda was, has been here, like, so this is recent.
I don't know about how many was like, I couldn't understand all of that. All that back and forth, I mean, and I talked about all of them and, uh
You know, I never talked about all of them, I haven't reviewed it, and I don't wanna talk about it until I get
Nobody did, I didn't even notice it, I'm
You know, I like to be like, cause I'm saying, wait a minute, I just said